To the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jack's not here, so we don't have... I'm jumping the gun here. Everybody's here but Jack here. Any public comment?
So, I'll make a motion that we postpone the acceptance of the February minutes, or March minutes, until we can get a copy of them to review.
Yes. Got a second? Kathy, second. Any questions on the motion? All in favor? Opposed? All business. Tom is not here, so we can't... We can still talk about a little bit of this on the subdivision ordinance. Gary has come up with some suggestions. He put a lot of work into this. When he's done writing, we'll let him explain his.
Basically, what I did was I went... I read through the documents that Bill uses. The... Wrong page. The procedures for subdivision, Mount Pleasant Township procedure for subdivisions that we were given. And two of the things that stood out right off the bat were the fact that we have a fee schedule for minor and median subdivisions, yet we don't have any definitions or anything in Section 178 that hints at what a median subdivision is and what is a minor subdivision doesn't fit the numbers that we were given on the procedures for subdivision. So, this not being the official document, just being a handout, we need to recommend it gets major modification. When you start digging into the actual code, under 178, first thing I did was look at the definitions and said, okay, what have we got on definitions that doesn't fit with the things that we've fought with in the past? And all the highlight stuff is what I've added. If it's not highlighted, it was actually in there already, or it's just a comment portion. So, you can see under lot, it used to just say designated parcel tract of land established by a platte or otherwise permitted by law to be used, developed, built upon his unit. And I'm recommending we add that a lot is a tractor area of land of less than 10 acres established by a platte or otherwise permitted by law. And the reason of doing that is further on down at the bottom of the page, you'll see, I think we should add two new definitions considering the type of properties that we have here, and they're not defined within the code. I'm recommending that we add definitions for a farmette. And as you can see there, it says a non-commercial parcel that is used primarily for other than farming and which qualifies for clean and green tax preference. That basically means it has to be over 10 acres, but it's not being used as a farm. And then the other one that I was really surprised to find that we don't have in here anywhere is farm. And so there, I just said a parcel that where the primary use is consistent with general farming practices and which qualifies for clean and green tax preference. By adding those two things, we can go back up to the subdivision section where we had subdivision minor, but it didn't talk about it being just two lots or anything at that point. So, I added a whole Section B to subdivision minor. And basically there, I'm just suggesting the division of property into two or three separate parcels which will qualify for clean and green tax preference upon completion of the subdivision, requiring no new streets, having direct access to an existing street by private driver right-of-way, have permitted on lots sewage permits for our declared non-building parcels, and have a minimal land disturbance such as normal to farming or single-family construction. The reason that last part of that's going to be important is later on, I'm going to recommend that we create a spreadsheet that defines which portions of 178... I want to say it's 178-13... 178-18. Create a spreadsheet that defines what section of 178-18 is required depending on whether you have a minor, a medium, or any other type of subdivision. The other definition that I added was the subdivision medium to help us get in line with this handout that's been being handed out. And basically, that, all I've done there is changed the two or three separate parcels or lots into four or five separate parcels or lots. That's what they have on the fee schedule part of this other document, so I figured that would fit it. And that will allow this document to better fit what we're requiring under the actual code. And the spreadsheet portion, I didn't have a chance to get to that today. But that would be much like, we take the 32 sections of 178-18, and we list across there the commercial use, subdivision minor, subdivision medium, subdivision major, PDR, or PRD, I mean, mobile home. There's a few other things listed in this thing that probably ought to be part of that spreadsheet. And then you get down to the list of 32 items, and there's either an X or there's not. And if there's not an X, subdivision minor is, out of 32 items, is really only going to have about 10 items. Then you're not required to supply that on your platte. If there is an X, it's required to be supplied on the platte. So, it was that kind of process that I went through when I was trying to do this. The, on the whole 178 piece, I said, we need to modify to include the minor and medium subdivision. And the trick there is this whole land disturbance issue. A lot of what we require under 32 items has to do with the concept that there's going to be major land disturbance in the process of creating streets, putting sewers in, putting underground electric in, putting water in. So, the real trick is to try to set it up so that when you're really not subdividing to do something like that, then you shouldn't have to jump through all those extra hoops. The next piece of it that I came across was preliminary plan submission and approval. This got real interesting because we... In this document, in the official code document, we're not supposed to be sending it to county. All the subdivision people that come through here, usually the surveyor or somebody that's doing that side of thing, is the one that sends it to the county planning commission, gets it signed, then hands it to the owner and bring here to the township. And under this document, the township says that's which should happen, and that we should bring three copies of the platte here and send three copies to the county so that they can be signed. Under the official code, we're actually saying that seven copies are to come to the township, and the township will send it to the county. So, I don't know that the county really wants to pick that part of that up, but that's what it says in code is supposed to be happening. So, I think we need to change that so that we're not taking, you know, having all these extra things being taken care of. And then the last big hit that I had on the code is this whole section of 178-18 where we find the 32 main items, 33 main items, excuse me. 33 main items, nine supplementary, 10, 11, whoop. Gotta keep going. 14 supplementary items. So, there's a total of 47 items that are supposed to be on the plots. The strange part about it is that a large majority of them, almost all the supplemental information is relative again to that concept of the PRD where you're putting in sewer lines, you're putting in water lines, putting in roads. And so, the requirement is there. Now, here's what's interesting, and as you all know, when you did a subdivision, I had asked for, I had found this, so I did it. The catch-all right now is 178-18-7, which reads, list any variance or other zoning approvals which are being requested on which, or which has been granted by the township. So, if you remember, my platte that I sent in here for review had about 16 requests for, I don't see a need for doing the two-foot topos. I don't see a need for showing my utility right-of-ways when I don't have any utility right-of-ways. I don't... So, there was a way around all this. It's just very harsh when, in reality, we've set out three definitions, yet we only have one of those items that's defined. The PRD is the only one that we based everything on in this document. And there should have actually been some way of showing that, hey, if we've got five major things that we call out as subdivisions or as planned processes, then we should have five different charts inside that say, this is what should happen. And when I say the five, the five that are listed here right now are minor subdivision, median subdivision, major subdivision, mobile home park, and planned residential development. And I'll tell you the truth, when I looked through here, I had trouble figuring out just exactly how mobile home park would be dealt with in this process. Because it's, you know, this document also says, you shouldn't be cutting a road in. And it says shall, it doesn't say should. It says shall. You shall, whenever possible, use existing contours to put in your roads and utility easements and your planned locations for your, the houses in your development. In other words, you're supposed to be doing minimal cut and fill. And I don't know how that would even be placed, to tell you the truth. Because you're going to end up in arguments of, okay, so is a 15% rate on a road a valid insurance issue and gives me the right to do a lot of cutting? Or is keeping the topography as near as possible the actual goal? Because right now, this says that keeping the topography as near as possible is the actual goal. So, those are some of the things I found out through this process. And we can use these as, nothing in there is written in stone. It's just what I've thrown out. And by next meeting, I'll try to get the chart together and some other things to help us look at it. But I'm really looking at how you all feel about this beginning part of it. Is it heading the way you were thinking too, or am I way off basis to how it was thinking?
She's shitty like a farmette. How many acres?
Well, it has to be a minimum of 10 to be able to qualify for clean and green. That's why I used the clean and green tax preference as an item.
And then a farm?
What, I'll tell you, Kathy, I thought this, I even sat down with my wife and asked her, and I said, you know, how would you look? That is so tough anymore. I mean, I know people that have 20-acre farms, and they actively are raising great cattle on there and buying their own, buying all their hay. They're not even trying to put up hay and stuff. So, you know, do you say a farm has to be at least 20 acres? Or, you know, what does a farm have to be anymore? And so, it was a tough call. So, what, that's why I just used that term of generally accepted farming practices. If you're raising sheep...
It could actually be 10 acres only.
Farm can actually be 10 acres. If you can get it, if it's 10 acres and fits clean and green, based on the way I wrote that definition, it could be a farm or a farmette. Hey, Bob, Vincent had a hog farm on less than 10 acres off 980 at one time, as I recall. I mean, he was running a full hog operation out of that place.
I knew someone on 519 was doing one, and the pigs were making noise. Remember that?
Yeah, so, if you've got 10 acres and you build a hog barn, and you are actively raising hogs in it, is it a farm or isn't it? Yeah, it's, it was a tough call. So, that's why I wrote what I did, because I decided I wasn't going to try to say this many acres. Instead, I'm letting the county be the judge. If it'll qualify for clean and green, it can be a farm or a farmette. The real thing, the reason the clean and green's in there is that's what exempt commercial operations. So, if you wanted to do a commercial operation, you wouldn't be able to just go buy your 10 acres and say, oh, I've got over 10 acres. Where if you put 10 acres in, you would. Because the county's not going to grant clean and green to a commercial operation. And that's why the key being, if it can qualify for clean or green, then it's a farm or a farmette. Otherwise, it drops back into either a lot or the commercial operation.
Yeah, I agree with you. That's a good way to end it.
So, you're saying that if somebody builds a house on 10 acres, that's, and alls they do is cut grass, that can be considered a farmette?
Yes.
If they've applied for it, could be a farmette?
No, if it qualifies for. And I specifically left it as qualified because I started thinking, you know, not everybody that can get clean and green wants it. Because down the road, they may want to do something else, in which case, they'll have to abide by a different section of the code. The question is, can the property qualify for clean and green? Not do they actually have it?
But is what they're going to do on that 10 acres, how are we going to determine the list of what can be used for that versus not?
You go talk to the county, and you'll find out you can't do clean and green with... It's got to be woodland, it's got to be grassland, it's allowed to have a residence, and you're pretty much locked in after, or be an active agricultural or forest business. You're pretty much locked in after that. You try to, you try to build a motel on 12 acres and ask for clean and green, they're going to laugh at you.
You have any questions for Gary?
I mean, is it the right direction? We don't have to vote on this tonight. We're going to send it to them anyways.
You put some good work into it, it's, you know, it's a start.
I just, that's all it's trying to do, is get a start. And like I said, we get into this other section, you can see, it's just, I've got marks everywhere, all over everything. It's...
I'm glad you're willing to read that and figure it out.
Well, we've got one. Wait, I'll give you this one, this is another good one. 178-17, primary plan submission and approval, right? There were a bunch of these. Every time you commit to a subdivision, I know, because I've done two in the last couple of years, and I've watched all the other ones come through here, who do you go to? You go to Bill, right? He gives you the form, you fill it out. He takes your check, and he says, okay, we'll see you at your next meeting. Well, the code says you're only allowed to turn it into the township secretary or treasurer. It doesn't say, or zoning officer. It doesn't say zoning officer, says secretary or treasurer. And then in that same Section C, 178-17C, is where it says, complete and correctly execute the application, hand the application fee, and seven copies of the preliminary platte and supplementary information. And then it says, they'll distribute the copies, those seven copies, to the township secretary, shall transmit copies of the preliminary plan to the supervisors, the planning commission, the county planning commission, and the township engineer. Now, they ask for three copies, one for zoning, one for the supervisors in the record, and one for the engineer. Because they know everybody's already sending them to the county through their surveyors and that. So, that's just a good section of what's not there. And then Section D comes in and says, distribution, or that's the distribution. It's nowhere in any of the documentation or the agreements we have that that's the way to do it. So, that's just another example of the kind of stuff that I've been finding. Oh, there's another one here, 178-13, Item C. It's on page 178-14. It says minor subdivision, and I'm saying we change that to minor or median subdivision, and minor land developments, which is defined. As an optional procedure, any applicant for development, preliminary approval, final approval of subdivisions which are classified under these two items, or land developments were classified, may be submitted simultaneously. Which means, and the reason that's there is because code says that we're supposed to get a preliminary, and then we kick that back with the engineer's information, everything. And then people come back, and they're supposed to fill out another document for final review. And then we would review that and make our recommendation to the supervisors. The reality is, we've always just allowed that. Except for PRDs, we've allowed that to just roll in to be in one submission. But technically, that's only allowed under that one clause right now of the minor subdivision. The other interesting part of that is that it then says, however, this option shall not apply to any further subdivision for a tract which a minor subdivision has already been made. And I got a big question there of why? Why is that statement in there? And let me give you the example of what that would cause. You've got 100, Kathy's got, how many acres you got left down there, Kathy?
90.
100?
90.
90? Because you subdivided off that piece to sell to the tower people, if you wanted to subdivide another 10 acres off, according to the way this is written, you're not allowed to go through the fast process. You have to go through the whole long process. Because this option shall not apply to any further subdivision for a tract which a minor subdivision has already occurred.
But I didn't subdivide that off, they just leased it.
Okay. If you had subdivided it, so you're still safe. You haven't subdivided any of your property off. But you see what I'm saying there. Any farmer out there that sold two acres to pay taxes, and now they want to sell another two acres, they can't do the quick process. They'd have to go through the full thing because of that line that's in there. And I am, for the life of me, I can't understand why we would care. As long as somebody can meet the fact that they're still doing large subdivision pieces and doing minor subdivisions, why do we care that they've done one two years ago? I just don't get it. So...
So, they don't keep coming to us, you know, with one or two at a time?
It could all... There's a whole nother section, this, which I didn't get into yet. I just started it, and then it made me so sick, I decided I was done, and I decided to go eat chili instead and wait for the meeting to start. But it's this design standards, it's the 178-28 section. Design standards and required improvements. It's, well, it's just, again, it is a perfect example of what we should expect out of people doing planned residential developments. But to have it locked in to somebody that wants to subdivide 10 acres off their 150-acre farm, and they're not adding any new roads, or any new road frontage for that matter, it's just, it's a little bit crazy. So, that's what I found out, guys. I'm done talking. I apologize.
Well, you know, I don't come up toward Hickory too often. I always go the other direction. And today, I did come up through. And I thought we were trying to keep Hickory looking nice or whatever. And I see all this stuff behind the Dollar General, you know, those... What are we getting out of that for the township? Tax money?
Oh, yeah, we definitely get tax money out of it. That's what it means of being a commercial entity, is that you...
I thought they were supposed to plant trees and things to hide things.
They have trees out front, they're not growing pretty well.
It must be this high.
It is...
And remember, I questioned about the Dollar General. Does it have to look like that? Oh, that's the way all our stores look. Well, you go to Beaver County, in the town of Beaver, their Dollar General doesn't look like that.
It, here's the thing. Do you want, do you think that everybody that decides to rebuild a house in Hickory or build a new house somewhere inside the mixed use, should they all have to build a Victorian-style house? The dilemma is, and if you remember, when we did this thing two years ago, we beat this back and forth hard, was do we want to try to make Hickory look like a certain thing and Mount Pleasant Township look like a certain thing? Or do we want to allow more freedom for the residents to be able to do things while still controlling the, you know, the ability to just turn it into a junkyard? That's the wrong term, because junkyard's not the right way to say it. But to try to get to where you're going, it's all a matter of how much control to keep it within reason while not making it so that, you know, you can't even build... My son lives in a Nashville area. He cannot build a doghouse without going to their planning group. He can't build a doghouse. Because that's listed under structures in their program. All structures have to come through. And yes, how it looks matters to them. Should I like to just build a doghouse, doghouse? And animal rights people have made sure that it has to be an insulated doghouse because Nashville does get cold sometimes. And I found it all very amusing, and I was happy I live in Hickory as I was reading through it.
I guess.
They're going to put 15 trees on it in West for that new building.
They have all, they have stuff parked in the front already, a bunch of...
Any other questions? Thanks, Gary. It was good, Gary. It's a good start. Just continue on, and Mr. McDarnall here, find out what we have to do to proceed to make some changes. New business. Want to talk about the golf course a little bit. We have a form for temporary use of structure at the golf course from Green Tree Services. Mrs. Williams is here today to represent the company. Mrs. Williams is here today to represent the company.
I guess I have the first question for this whole process. I know we don't have the minutes in front of us, and thus we postponed the approval of them until next meeting when we can have them. But y'all helped me out here. I swear we passed a motion last meeting that said that our recommendation to the supervisors was to disco to the zoning hearing board. Is that how, you all remember it?
That's what I kind of remembered, that they were supposed to continue. And I feel we'd go the same way again.
So you're thinking we should pass the same motion a second time to reinforce it?
Yes.
I will so make that same motion again, that we recommend to the township supervisors that disco before the zoning hearing board, and if they decide that they want to do it a different direction, then I would sincerely ask them to give us very clear direction as to what they're expecting from us on this one.
Do you want a motion to a second? Any questions on the motion? All those in favor? Any comment from Mrs. Williams?
No.
Any other comment? Make a motion for a German?
Oh, I always give that motion, yeah.
Kathy seconds? All in favor, I oppose. Gary, flip that switch, please.